I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. We can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We had no visitors wishing to speak and no written communication tonight. We do have, before we start our board and committee update, since our last meeting, a few of us have attended some various events. Mr. Pennella, myself, and Mrs. Ernst attended a Harriet County School Boards Association Dinner, which Mrs. Ernst was honored as a rising star, so congratulations to her. Also, some Windermere PTA Dinner, awards dinner, and a middle school, high school PTA Awards Dinner. So, all were very good, some great honorees, very impressive. So, with that, we have the audit committee report.
Yeah, Lumps and McCormick reported back to us their testing that they did. The first one was on the purchasing accounts payable, and it was kind of interesting. We just went through that whole presentation of their claims auditor. And basically, this went back and tested all the procedures that that claims auditor actually does. So, it's not only relooking at what he looks at, but you know, basically checking out those procedures on the date. So, we did well on that. The only thing is, you know, they looked at 20 purchases and 19 NPO. One of them did, and it was approved by the purchasing agent, so that was fine. Then we went to the purchasing cards, and I think we've only gone to these for the last five, six years. And so, you know, they went and did some testing events as well. And it seems as though that, you know, they tested 27 transactions. Two of them didn't have supported documentation, and those were for some travel, and either they're missing an invoice or agenda, but, you know, they were able to figure that one out. And then, the sign-in sheet with the purchasing cards, where people that were in the business office didn't realize that you were signing out purchasing cards based on usage, rather they were signing them up based on taking them out, like taking them out of the office. So, you know, the recommendations were to, every time it's used, to have it signed out, so we always have a record of who is using the cards. And that was pretty much it. So, that was it for the year.
Great. Thank you.
Anything I left out?
It was a great job.
Okay.
Elizabeth Bluff, I think we do have a safety committee update.
I do. Our safety committee met on the 12th of June, and I just had a few updates to provide to the board. We did meet with our school resource officer, Officer Trey Johnson, and we had an opportunity to open the floor and ask him some questions, and we learned about where he is basically throughout the day, and what sort of educational opportunities he's been providing to the students. That was very helpful. We were updated on the mental health curriculum, which we did have, prior board meeting, we did have an update about that. And we spoke about the family support center, which looks like it will open closer to early 2020 due to some grant funding and construction. We had a policy, a couple of policy updates. It came to our attention that student membership is no longer a requirement for our committee. However, we determined that we would prefer to keep student members on. They provide a lot of insight, and so we definitely determined that we are going to keep them as part of our committee. And we spoke about some new guidelines that came to our attention about door panels and door hardening, both of which Mr. Rampado is on top of, and any future capital work about the door hardening, we'll consider that. Additionally, we went through a handout that we will be placing in some buildings about signing in and out for faculty and staff, just mainly to maintain our safety if we have any emergency drills and want to have accountability for all of our personnel. We did speak about the Smart Schools Bond Act, and there is actually a new committee that will be formed by Mrs. Bazinski, and so any construction regarding something that might be related to the Smart Schools Bond Act would definitely come from that committee, and we can expect some future updates as soon as that committee is formed and underway. And lastly, we had an opportunity to review our building self-assessments, and we just went through some updates and reported out to the committee about what we were finding in each of the buildings. So, that was basically it. Our next meeting is in the fall.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Every year this time of year, it's always bittersweet. It's the end of another school year. It's the beginning of summer, and unfortunately, we do end up saying goodbye to some of our longtime employees, who we'd like to recognize tonight for their tremendous service to our school district in this community. So, it's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Mike Bellisle to the podium to honor some of our district office retirees. First, we'll start with Ms. Deb Davron. If you could come and join us, please.
So, I had a little write-up. I'm gonna, I'll just read the parts there. I'm just excited. So, Deb's left her mark on the district, so this is my pun, so this is fun. Started in the district in 1987. That's right, right? So, but started in a role as a teacher aide, and then over time, actually has meant two real roles here in Amherst, as an aide and also as clerical support. And then, whenever something comes up, she kind of saves us a little bit up here once in a while. So, that's what her third role is, really. Having said all that, while she's been those roles, really, what I've always noticed is that students are sort of the center of, not sort of, but are completely at the center of everything she does. Anytime we meet, it's a discussion on what's better for kids, what's better for students in her current role as a special friends coordinator, a professional working with Mrs. Barr, or what's better for kids in the off, whatever it may be, it's always about kids. And that is what has always stuck out to me about Deb. So, it's hard to congratulate someone who spent so much time and so many years here, but to sum up, so many years here in the district, thank you, at least from me.
My pleasure.
So.
So, Deb is also known to some of us as Aunt Deb, because you may have that fun aunt that you're always happy to see, because she's always energetic and lively and bringing great energy to whatever environment she's in. And I know the kids feel that way about her, too, because they're always rushing to her to hug her whenever she's in the school. So, thank you, Deb.
She's angels.
Now, we have Mrs. Green, Mrs. Kathy Green. She retired earlier this year, but she's here for recognition tonight from Mike's office in the HR office.
Yeah, we're still learning to try and live without Kathy, so, and we are. But we still have her on speed dial and text. Relatively, once every couple of weeks or so.
Just came back for open enrollment.
Yeah, yeah. She actually did. She came back for open enrollment for a few days and really worked with Marie, who replaced her. Marie's doing a fantastic job, but unfortunately, when you have huge shoes to fill, they take a little while to fill up. You know, it's funny, because what I wrote was Kathy was green, right? So, it's my, so. When she took the job originally, and what she has told me, she started two years before I did, so as my kid said, he's been here for a long time, Deb. So, at least their math is good. They at least have that down. But when you started, you said that the job was so, and you really didn't know much about it. And as she's left us, she's become an expert and sort of that mentor and the instructor for our replacement, thank goodness, and she's become the master. When she left, when she came on, it was, she felt the opposite. But, so now you get to support someone who felt like you did way back then. But having said, she's doing a fantastic job. So, I cannot thank her enough personally, because with my transition, for those of you who know, I transitioned from special education to HR payroll to do some work there, and to have someone who knows the ropes and knows the world so well, especially in the world of benefits, you don't want to mess with people's benefits, right? So, you've got, you get that right. She gets it right every time, and she gets it right with awesome personnel, you know, personnel, and it's just skills, social skills with folks. She makes everyone just feel good, and everyone feel welcome. It's part of our family here in Amherst, and she does it in an area that sometimes is personal to them, and there's no one who has done it better. So, Kathy, congratulations.
So, when I started teaching in the district in the late 90s, you, as a benefit, you had the choice of one of 13 healthcare plans from three different providers, maybe more. And Kathy was at the forefront of overseeing a transition to one provider, and then a transition to a self-funded program, and we couldn't have done it without you. So, thank you very much. Great job. Now, I'd like to welcome Mr. Pidgen, our high school principal, to honor another, earlier in the year retirement, we had in Duke McGuire, who couldn't be here tonight, but he did send a representative from the McGuire household to accept his recognition and his honor. So, welcome, Mr. Pidgen.
Thank you. You know, there are a few people that can go by just one name, Elvis Maguire. Prince and Duke. Duke is an Amherst institution. He was a purveyor of good vibrations for 30-plus years. You know, you could probably fill up several sheets of accolades for Duke McGuire. He's definitely a special individual, and that was crystal clear at his retirement party in October, where there was 200-plus people in attendance, family, friends, former students he coached, current students, alumni, a couple of local celebrities were even there, including Mrs. Pennella. It was a local celebrity.
Hall of Fame quarterback.
A Hall of Fame quarterback that strolled in as well. So, that was always exciting, and I think people really are made to feel special around Duke, and that's what makes him special, is although he has a wonderful personality, he's actually a very humble individual. And he collected a lot of accolades as an Amherst athlete, being an alumni, as well as playing minor league and major league prospect, and played on a major league team, if I'm not mistaken, was in the movie The Natural. He's just, you know, that type of celebrity in Western New York. Everybody knows Duke. And everybody knows Duke because Duke has always taken a special interest in people as individuals. He knew all of our kids. He had a nickname for all of our students, and he always gave out that special welcome and that warmth to all of our individual students. Most particularly, too, Duke always had a special eye for the underdog and our special needs students. He was really special to them, and they really loved Duke. And so, we're excited that Duke has stayed with us. He's gonna stay engaged to the athletics program, and that's certainly something that's to our advantage. Not a day goes by, or not a week goes by, I should say, where we don't get visitors to the building, alumni typically, and they usually stop in, and they're happy to be in the building, and typically, the first question out of their mouth is, "Where's Duke? Is Duke here?" Everybody wants to come back and see Duke, because he made such a great impression on everyone. He currently holds our Facebook record for the most hits ever. When he was inducted into our Amherst Baseball Hall of Fame, he collected 25,000 hits on that post, and it's still collecting hits to this day. It's five years old. So, that shows you how popular Duke is. And it's most gratifying, you know, to really reflect on Duke, because he, Duke always saw the positive in every individual, and even some of the toughest kids at our school, and maybe the most difficult to deal with, always loved Duke, because he knew that he cared about them, and he could be tough on them, too, at times, and they were respectful to him. But he always, they, all the kids knew that Duke liked them, and they liked being liked by Duke. So, he's a special individual, and we look forward to many, many more years ahead with Duke being part of our community. He stops at all types of engagements still, so he's really still a big part of his family. And speaking of family, there's nothing that he's more proud than his wife, and his children, and his grandson, Duke. So, we wish him well and his family well as he partitions and kind of evolutions over to being a full-time babysitter at a part-time Amherst institution. So, we'll send our congratulations to Duke.
Thank you, Mr. Pidgen.
Send our best.
He sends his sincere gratitude. You know, the herd is back in town, so, you know, he loves his baseball, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, I'm pleased to welcome Dr. Griesmer from our middle school to recognize one of our school counselors, Sheri Batta.
Hey. So, before I begin talking about Sheri, I have to say how pleased I am to hear two things that were said. First, in reference to Duke, that he's, there's gonna be a theme here, that he's staying connected to Amherst. And then, with Kathy Green, that she's given the speed dial number to Mike. I've been asking Sheri for the past three months if I could do that speed dial deal. So, Kathy, after this, please tell her that that is okay.
It works great.
Yes, yes. That is a leissee of the model. But the thing I didn't count on is that she was gonna be asked to stand here next to me, because she has always kept close tags, and she said today, "Keep this brief," so now she can be here. Make sure, give me the hook if necessary. But I do have something prepared. As Mrs. Sheri Batta rightfully prepares to enter the world of retirement, make no mistake about her positive impact at Amherst Middle School. Sheri's departure leaves behind a huge void in both the cultural and structural norms and needs of our building. All who have worked with her understand and can plainly see the tremendous and tireless work she has done for every student and family to ever cross her path since she became an AMS Tiger in, I believe, January of 1993. She is truly an expert at counseling our students with grace, timeliness, effectiveness, and endless compassion. With her expertise, Sheri has positively impacted our school's culture beyond measure and greatly assisted all faculty, staff, and administration, thereby leaving AMS a better place. Beyond the work with her case, though, however, and regardless of whether she was organizing events or communications for Web, Awards Day, or Moving Up Day, Sheri always had additional plates to spin, and she did so beautifully. Her organization, timeliness, and consideration with these additional tasks were masterful. And as an important aside, she has kept me informed and on track more times than I can count. While AMS will continue on, and while another school year will open in September, we will all miss Sheri Batta greatly. Sheri, I truly can't thank you enough for being you and for helping all of us at AMS as you have. You are a phenomenal school counselor and absolutely wonderful person. All the best in retirement.
Congratulations. Thank you. So, Sheri was here a few years after me in the middle school, and when I arrived in the middle school, I had a lot to learn about the middle school philosophy, educating the whole child, you know, what the middle school tenets are for, you know, educating young adolescents, and Sheri was always my go-to for how to stay positive when sometimes middle school kids can get under your skin. She was always the person that had a can-do attitude, and she always put children first, and that I'll never forget about you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Now, I'd like to welcome Smallwood Principal, Mr. Dan Lewis, and Bob Germaine for recognition.
Thank you. Bob, before I get started, though, I just want to assure you that I am not planning on putting you on speed dial, so.
I'll answer the phone.
There's two. All right. Here we go. So, in all seriousness, it's my great privilege tonight to be here to help honor and recognize one of our district's longest-serving employees, so Mr. Bob Germaine. Mr. Bob, as the students call him, with great affection, if anyone's been in the building, you hear that all the time, the kids light up when they see him, and it's, "Mr. Bob this, Mr. Bob that." High five, low five, side five, no thigh, right? The kids love it. And Bob has a lot of fun with that. Bob has spent the last 38 years of his career in the Amherst district, and all but the first two at Smallwood. So, Bob had spent two years in this building, but we're lucky that we got the greatest majority of those years over at Smallwood School. So, anyone who knows Bob, it's safe to say that he's a true character, and he's friends with anyone and everyone, old and young alike. He possesses a tremendous sense of humor, and he's very highly dedicated and has this amazing work ethic that Bob brings with him every single day. So, anytime something's needed, and I know our PTA parents will attest to this, Bob's usually the first one there, and he always says yes, no matter what the task is, little or big. He goes way above and beyond and puts himself out there every single day to not only make people feel good and kids feel good about coming to our school, but he is of service to anyone and everyone, and that's something that I greatly respect about Bob. So, I know that myself, along with the entire Smallwood community, are going to miss you greatly, Bob. I am proud to call you a friend, and I'm happy to wish you the best of luck in this next chapter of your life. So, congratulations. It's welcome.
Bob's a hit in the kitchen in Smallwood, because I think he's the number-one taste tester over there. He's always at the forefront of new menu items, because he's always willing to provide his opinion and his services. So, one of the things that, one of the great benefits I've had in my career is I've had the opportunity to leave Amherst as a teacher and go and to serve as a leader in two other districts, and then painfully have to wait to come back to Amherst, because once I realized that the culture of this district is extraordinary, I knew I wanted to be part of it in whatever capacity I could. This was my ideal position, and I'm thankful to have that. But the reason I wanted to come back to this district is because of the people. So, there's an old saying that people in school districts are what make the difference, not programs. You can go buy books, you can buy computers, you can buy, you know, materials, but if you don't have the right people, you're not going to go, not gonna have a very high level of success. And I think tonight, with the retirees that we're recognizing, you represent the cream of the crop, and you truly are a loss to our school district. Pioneer with healthcare, at the forefront of the development of Amherst Middle School, 38 years of service, connecting with kids every day, leading our after-school program from the ground up, an institution, as Greg had mentioned. You have all left your mark on this school district, but more importantly, you've left your mark on the people that you've served with, because that means that the way you carry yourself and your professionalism will live on through those of us who remain. So, thank you. Congratulations. Good health and happiness. In a much less emotional topic, we would like to talk about our year-end fund balance and reserves.
Follow that, Miss Pidgen.
Hi, everyone. It just doesn't seem fair.
Follow that. Your empty room.
It seems always be the case that I follow these wonderful presentations that are heart-wrenching and emotional and joyful, and then we talk about finance.
You're a pioneer, too, Miss Pidgen.
So, thank you. Tonight, we will be reviewing our reserve activity for the school year and our projected fund balance. So, first, we'll start with our reserve activity. So, we have the information from July 1st, which matches our audit from last year, and we ended the year with $6.9 million in total fund balance. While we did appropriate $1.2 million of our reserves to balance this year's budget, we do not project needing any of that, which, as you know, was our goal. We did use a small amount from our tax cert, our tax cert reserve, but we did not need to appropriate the full amount that we budgeted, which was $60,000, or the $200,000 in EBLR. We also appropriated about $980,000 in unappropriated fund balance to close that gap, and we don't think we'll have to use that as well. In the added column, most of the additions, with the exception of the retirement contribution reserve, are interest. And then, down at the bottom, we see some changes in our unappropriated fund balance, our assigned fund balance, and then there is a change in the retirement contribution. Now, this is all pending the discussion that we're gonna have tonight with the board. So, none of, aside from the interest allocations, none of those changes have happened yet, but we need to make some projections so that we can get an idea of where we might end at year end. So, we feel that we'll have about $300,000 or so to move into our reserves this year. Tonight, we'll be discussing two possible resolutions of where we might move any excess money to, and excess money is anything over the 4% that we are allowed to keep by law. So, it's 4% of next year's budget, so from one budget year to the next, even if we had been at 4%, that number would increase, because our budget increases a little bit. This past year, we were at about 3.7%, 3.8%, so bringing that up to 4% of a new budget would be an increase of $230,000. We did decrease our appropriation in next year's budget a little bit, from just over $1 million to $920,000. So, that would leave about $197,000 that we could move into reserves. That would be what would be left over 4%. So, I put it in retirement contribution, just for the purpose of illustration. The retirement contribution reserve includes our new TRS sub-fund. So, that is ERS contributions, which had been established already, and our newly-established sub-fund, which we took care of and moved to people. So, if we were to take, if we end up with $300,000 in excess, and we move that to our 4% fund balance, we'd be left with just under $200,000, which we can put in the retirement contribution reserve and possibly start to fund our TRS sub-fund. We can move it into any of the other reserves. We can fund the capital reserve. So, that's a discussion that we need to have tonight with the board. That will be your decision, and Ms. Costodi has resolutions prepared, so that once you decide what maximum limits you would like to authorize, we can approve those resolutions. Funds will not be moved until after year end, when our books are closed and we have our official number, and that'll be after our external audit is complete. And we have 60 days after year end to move those funds and still have it be attributed to the current year.
So, we typically revisit the conversation in late October, maybe November, to go, when we go over the fund balance or the reserve plan, so to give the final numbers. So, what we're looking for tonight is a discussion on an authorization up to a limit. The TRS reserve, you may recall, is formulaic, so I can't remember the exact percentage, but it's, can you just elaborate on that for us?
We are authorized to put into the TRS sub-fund annually 2% of our prior-year TRS salaries. So, we add up last year's 17, 18 TRS salaries, 2% was 476,09. So, that was the exact amount. So, the resolution that we have proposed would authorize us up to that limit, not to exceed, which is our maximum, and the capital reserve resolution authorizes up to $500,000, simply because that's the maximum for that reserve as well. The TRS sub-fund moving forward into future years has a 2% of prior-year limit for that current year, so 2% of your prior-year salaries you can do annually, and then within five years, you can have a maximum of 10%. So, once you hit that 10% of your prior-year salaries, you can't continue to add to it. So, it does have a ceiling.
And the, I mean, there are still some unknowns. You know, as we sit here, while the end of the year, end of the fiscal year is in sight, as you know, we're being self-funded with our healthcare, there are some things that our consultants are telling us that are out there, that we come in as payments. We had an unusually high May, than, higher than, I guess, expected May. Our trends have been running pretty consistent across the year, and then we saw a spike in May with healthcare. We're hoping that comes back down in June, but these are, these numbers are all based on projections, so we hope that our projections are conservative enough so that if there is movement, it moves in the positive direction, but it's
Our previous projection was 178,000, and since then, we've received additional revenues from Medicaid reimbursements, and those are students who are receiving Medicaid-eligible services, but some of those payments are from services that were provided five years ago, six years ago. So it was very difficult to estimate what those revenues are going to be. So we did receive a larger sum of Medicaid revenues, which is the influx of revenue that we're showing here versus what we had in our last projection. And then we did move forward with our technology project as planned. It helps renew and sustain the technology and devices throughout the district, and we had included revenues in next year from BOSI's for a year-end project to help support next year's budget as well. So it was wonderful that we were able to move forward with that planned project, because not only does it support our students and staff and programs into the future, but it helps next year's budget as well. So with just over $600,000 more in revenue than budgeted, and just under $1 million less in expenditures than budgeted, these numbers, the revenue is over by 1.15%, and the expenditures are under by 1.6%. So on both sides of the equation, we're about 98% to 99% tight to our budget. So it's right there, it's right there. Some of the unknowns that we're still looking at for June, so we do have about $7.5 million of expenditures planned in June, a large portion of that is salary, as many of our teachers receive a very large payment at the end of June, so they have smaller checks throughout the year, and then they receive a balloon payment at the end of June to help carry them through the summer. Some people choose to have it divided equally among the 10 months, but we do have a very large payment at the end of June. As Mr. Pennella mentioned, we had about a $500,000 increase in health insurance payment due to high-cost payments, so we were doing pretty well. We were under our budget by a little bit, and that one weekend ate up that whole amount. We're still doing okay, we're almost on target, but if we have any more large payments committed, that might swing into some of those 300,000. We also have our transportation invoices for May and June that we haven't received yet, and those are very, very busy months between athletics and our field trips, so we're anxiously awaiting those bills, so we can get those in and get those adjusted to help support this final number. The good news is, if these hold true, we do believe that our fund balance will increase to about $7.2 million, which is where we were a couple of years ago. We needed to use a little bit of fund balance this past year to support our expenditures and our budget. We're grateful that the board agreed to appropriate $1.1, $1.2 million again, knowing that we were going to work diligently to make sure that we didn't spend that, and we hope that we've been successful this year, and we'll continue to make those efforts again next year.
It does come with a lot of oversight from your office, so congratulations, because the management of the budget is tricky, especially with the self-funded healthcare. So I appreciate everything that you put into looking at it almost daily to make sure that we're keeping a good eye on things, because that is the goal, although we have to appropriate from our fund balance and reserves, everyone may recall, we've set an ultimate goal of 8 million, and when you're 98% tight with the budget, it's hard to grow those, but to be able to stop using them, when we saw a year where we had to use about $300,000 and now replenish some potentially, is movement in the right direction. So thank you.
Is that Medicaid, is that systematic, or that was a one-time special situation?
No, it's over multiple students, multiple years. There, every service that a Medicaid-eligible student receives, speech, OT, classes, we file stack forms, and we can claim reimbursements, because we're not guaranteed to get those reimbursements in the following year. Some of them are eight years later, some of them are five years later. So we have an idea of how much is due to us, but we don't accrue it. So you can, if you know you're going to get the money next year, you can accrue it, you can count on it, but in this instance, we don't. So it would, it would make our books inaccurate if we were accruing the money, because you never know, it could be five, six, four years later before it actually comes in. So we budget that revenue as an estimate and an average over the past handful of years. If there's an instance that we know we have a high needs to move in the district, and we anticipate a larger return or a larger reimbursement from that particular student, maybe we would adjust that up a little bit, but it's risky, because if that revenue doesn't come in, you start to affect the cash flow.
So in our discussions, Mrs. Kuzynski and I thought we would hone in on the TRS reserve and the capital project reserve, knowing that the capital project reserve has a limit of 500,000 and the balance is currently zero, and that there's estimates out there that the TRS rates coming down to around 10% this year, or below 10%, it's estimated that they may go back up, because it's based on a five-year snapshot of the market, and there's a good year that's dropping off in that five-year snapshot. So there's been a lot of caution that that number may go back up again in future years. So we had kind of targeted our discussion around TRS and capital, and the question we really have for the board is, do you want us to fund as much as we can in TRS up to that limit of 474, approximately 474, or do you want to put some in the TRS and some in capital? And then, of course, there's other reserves, but those were the two that we thought were the ones that warranted the most discussion.
The TRS, that's the one that they were allowing for, they just approved the rest of.
Yeah.
And then we approved setting it up.
The capital reserve, is there a benefit in terms of this capital project, being able to use that money to pay off, or, you know, just for bonds or bands or anything like that? Should be looking at you.
No, this capital reserve would be for a future project.
Okay.
So it would help offset the local share for a future project.
Which you did in the current project, the last time, I think, when we.
Yeah, 1.3 from the repair reserve and the capital reserve. Yeah, it was the initial, like, seed money to start the project, so it delayed our initial borrowing. The, and just to refresh your memory about how the tax cap works, it's a pretty intent, or a pretty extensive formula, but the part that deals with TRS pension contributions, we are only allowed to exclude that. In the tax cap formula, TRS increases once you get past 2% of an increase. So we are on the hook with our budget up to that 2%, and 2% of our TRS payroll is about 400,000 bucks, or it's a little bit more than 400,000 bucks, as Ms. Kuzynski said. So until we get to that 2% threshold, we're not able to incorporate it into our levy.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the 2% is not a 2% increase, it's 2% going from like, for example, 10 to 12, isn't it? Or is?
2% of the rate increase. So right now, this year, the rate is 8.86. If it went up to 10.86, we can't exclude any of it. If it goes up to 11.86, we can exclude the 1%.
Right. So it's really like 20%. It's not a true, like, 2% increase year to year.
It's a rate increase.
Rate increase.
And that's the same for ERS. They're not excludable until they're above a 2% increase, 2 percentage points increase.
I would think that TRS is.
Yeah.
Especially since. But this point, if we, if we do the motions to authorize to go to the max on each one, this isn't, you know, because our audit's really not done until September, I mean, things can be changed, correct? I mean, if we.
We wouldn't need to come back to the board again to move the money, but we would certainly share with you where we landed. We would hope that the direction from the board would be to authorize whatever amount you're comfortable with, and then give us guidance. If it's more, like Mr. Pennella said, we'll put half in each, or we'll fully fund TRS, and then anything more than that, we'll put it in capital.
Yeah, that's really what we're looking for. It doesn't appear as though we'll have enough to fund either of those two that I put on the table in their entirety. So we can do the resolution to go to the max on both, but then, as we're working day to day and the books are closing, you know, we'll want to know from you, do you want to just go as much as we can with the TRS reserve until it's fully funded and then target capital? Or if we do end up landing around $300,000, put 150 in TRS and 150 in capital, you know, or something along those lines. A 60-40 ratio, I think that's really what we're looking for. What would your desire be?
Keeping in mind that that would be anything above 4%, so we're already looking to put 200,000 back into our unappropriated fund balance to get it up to 4%.
You need a poll, are you?
Yeah, well, I, you could have some discussion to see where everybody stands.
Mr. Smith?
Okay. Sam?
It seems like the TRS is important.
Yeah, I think it's focusing on putting it first in the TRS.
Right. So are we comfortable approving both resolutions to the maximum allocation, knowing that we'll fully fund TRS and anything above and beyond? The TRS allocation and the 4% allocation would be in the capital reserve. We are.
So Mrs. Kuzynski has two resolutions prepared to read before you adopt the new business.
Are we labeling this something new?
Yes. We will have item E1A as approval to transfer prior to close of the 2018-19 fiscal year, and within 60 days of the fiscal year-end, an amount up to but not to exceed $476,099 from the general fund into the Amherst Central School District Retirement Contribution Reserve Sub-Fund. And then the next resolution will be labeled E1J, and that will be to approve the transfer prior to the close of the 18-19 fiscal year, and within 60 days of the fiscal year-end, an amount up to but not to exceed 500,000 from the general fund into the capital reserve 2017.
So with that, we will need a motion for new business, I assume.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, new business items, one, or E1A through J, 2A through E, 3B through E, G and H.
We have a second. Mr. Reviewal? Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving new business items, E1A through J, 2A through E, 3B through E, G and H, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I'd like to welcome two new team members. Hopefully I don't pronounce your name okay, Sarah Monnet, is it? Welcome to the team. And Ms. Renee Marco, welcome. We look forward to working with you. So thank you. With that, do we have any follow-up action, Mr. Smith? Then we'll need a motion to convene to executive session.
Before you do that, can I just make one more comment?
Of course.
Sorry to interrupt that before the business, but we, you may have noticed, we amended the agenda recently to include an increase in donations we were accepting. So I recently had the pleasure of seeing our retired superintendent, Mr. Ford, and over the years, he has provided donations, and, you know, because of the recognition he has for Dennis Ford Field out there between Kings Highway and Westmoreland. So he provided me with a check the other day, and I know his family, and he are tremendously proud of the honor of having the field named after him. So I'm just passing around a picture he shared with me, Mr. Ford and his wife, three children and their mates, and their seven grandchildren taken at the field. Not all of his children and grandchildren are local, but this has become an annual occurrence and a tradition for them, which they are very proud of. So he asked that I share that with you.
Well, we thank Mr. Ford for his donation. With that, we will need a motion for convening to executive session.
May permission convene to executive session to discuss the employment of a particular individual.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Smith? All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.